Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the, to order the public hearing of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for May 25, 2021. Before we proceed, I'd like to call roll of board members. And with that, I'll go in my usual order. Ms. Bitter Smith, are you present?
I am, I'm here.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
I'm present.
Thank you. Dr. Norini?
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Smith?
Present.
Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen? Mrs. Nguyen? I heard you moments ago. Moving on. I'm Marie Sullivan and I'm present. In so purposes of this public hearing right now, we're a complement of six zero board members pending Mrs. Nguyen acknowledging her presence. With that, the first item on the agenda is item number C two, a truth and taxation hearing as required under state law. The Maricopa County Community College District is considering a proposed increase to the primary property taxes in fiscal year 2021, 22 on existing property. The proposed increase is 2.77%, which equals 14,266,877 dollars in additional property tax revenues from existing property. At this time, I will afford any resident or taxpayer the opportunity to address the governing board concerning the proposed action under consideration to increase primary property taxes on existing property. Elsa, do you know or are you aware of any public member who would like to offer comment this evening?
I'm sorry, I forgot to unmute. I'm checking the inbox and there is nothing there currently.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments from members of the board? No. I don't hear any offer of comment from the board. So with that, we've fulfilled our responsibility according to state law and that will conclude our truth and taxation hearing. Thank you, those of you who are present for that. With that now, I will move to adjourn this part and move us into our special meeting. With that, again, I will note that we have six board members in attendance. I will call up Mrs. Nguyen, are you present?
I am, I was here and then I was kicked out and I'm back.
Okay, well, we're glad you're back. So let the record please reflect that we are now a full complement of board members seven zero. With that, the next item was a public hearing concerning the adoption of the proposed budget of the Maricopa County Community College District for fiscal year 21, 22. This hearing is required under state law. The purpose of the hearing is to give any resident or taxpayer the opportunity to protect the inclusion of any item in the proposed budget. If questions, I will ask Mr. Kinto to provide an answer. With that, I will afford any resident or taxpayer the opportunity to address the governing board concerning the proposed action under consideration. Elsa, again, are there any comments? That you've noted?
No, ma'am.
Okay, moving on then, are there any comments from members of the board? There being none, I conclude the public hearings with these two items and now we'll move us to the special meeting. So with that, I would like to convene the special board meeting of May 25, 2021. I will also note that all seven board members are present for this special board meeting. The first item on tonight's agenda is item D two, which is a motion to levy the increased property taxes as previously described. So do I have a motion to that effect? Some move. Thank you, Dr. Thor, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Norini. Is there any continued or additional conversation or discussion from board members? There being none, in accordance with state law, the governing board will now vote on this motion by roll call vote. I will start with you, Ms. Bitter Smith.
Aye.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath.
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Norini?
Aye.
Dr. Thor?
Aye.
Mrs. Nguyen?
Aye.
I vote aye as well by a vote of seven zero, the vote of the motion passes, thank you. Moving on then to adoption of the proposed fiscal year 21, 22 Maricopa Community College District Budget, which is item D three of the presented agenda. This seeks approval of the proposed fiscal year 2021, 22 Maricopa Community College District Budget. In approving the budget, the board also also authorizes the expenditures of budgeted revenues and realized or designated fund balances within the total amount budgeted in each fund. That would be the general fund, auxiliary, plant fund, quasi endowment restricted and debt service. The board has been presented with a budget that should be acted on whether or not the board approves the two, well, which we have just done, the 2.77% increase in the existing tax levy. With that, is there a motion to adopt the budget as presented?
I see move.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath, is there a second?
Second.
Is that you, Ms. Nguyen?
It is, yes.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second to approve the budget for the fiscal year as presented. Is there any additional discussion by board members? Was someone trying to speak and I missed that? There being no discussion by board members in accordance with state law, the governing board will move, will now vote on this motion by roll call vote. Ms. Bitter Smith?
Aye.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath.
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Norini?
Aye.
Dr. Thor?
Aye.
Mrs. Nguyen?
Aye.
An aye as present, vote aye as well by of seven, by a vote of seven zero, the motion carries. The 21, 22 Maricopa Community College Budget has been adopted. And with that, I'd like to thank the entire fiscal team for putting this budget together. Also for the series of meetings that we've had that led the board to understand and appreciate the issues presented in this budget. And I think it's a good plan to follow in coming years, which leads us all to a better understanding and appreciation of this. So with that, thank you again, and I'm going to adjourn the special meeting and move us to the regular board meeting for the evening. With that, then I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for May 25, 2021. Rather than calling roll again, I will note that all seven board members are present. And with that, we'll move forward with the agenda as presented. There are no substitutions, as I know, and now we're on to the faculty executive council report. Dr. Sasha Radisich is going to present a report this evening entitled Thoughts About the Voice of the Board. Dr. Radish?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sasha Radisich and Maricopa's 1,400 faculty have given me the honor of serving as their spokesman to you, our governing board, for the coming year. Now, it is an odd sort of thing to speak to a governing board. We refer to you as the board and in doing so, we trick ourselves into thinking of you as a single entity. But I am frequently reminded that you are seven separate people with seven sets of thoughts and opinions. Still, you're not seven ordinary schlubs like me. You've been elevated by the citizens of Maricopa to serve as the official voice of our district. And as a result, when you each speak, your words carry a great deal of weight. President Sullivan, back in January, you reminded the board of its obligation to speak as one voice. But unfortunately, I think that many people misinterpret that idea as going in both directions. Since board members should speak with one voice, when one board member speaks, people assume that their message is the voice of the board. Too often, individual board members have voiced their personal opinions only to have voters, legislators, students or employees mistake that opinion as the voice of the board. When a board member says that Maricopa actions waste so much money that we're victimizing taxpayers or that faculty leaders are nothing more than union thugs or that staff plan to mistreat students as retaliation for not getting salary advancement, people hear those comments as the official opinion of the Maricopa Governing Board. Comments like these, they undermine our standing in the community, they erode our prestige with the state's legislators, they damage our stature in the eyes of our students and they tank the morale of our employees. My request for you tonight is twofold. First, as you make comments, please remember your stature. When you speak, the entire county listens. You've been elected to support and promote this district. Make sure that your statements advance that goal because your words matter. Secondly, as your fellow board members make comments, understand that silence sounds a lot like agreement. When one of your colleagues makes a public statement that you disagree with, please clarify that that comment was one person's opinion and not the voice of the board. Respectful dissent doesn't undermine board cohesiveness or collegiality. I mean, if you were expected to always agree on everything, then we wouldn't need the other six of you. Your constituents, your legislators, your students and your employees, they need to hear that dissent. It clarifies that the thoughts are coming not from the whole board, but rather from just one member. I believe in the power of communication and I look forward to an open dialogue with you this year. In the words of renowned educator Fred Rogers, you'll have things you'll want to talk about. I will too. I plan to speak freely to you over the coming year and I would never want to take away your right to do the same. All I ask is that you consider the impact of your words as well as the impact of your silence. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. And moving on to the adjunct faculty association report, we have received notice, notice from Dr. Train that she has provided her written report and they have been attached. So she also, she does not require any speaking time on the agenda tonight. With that, we'll move to the interim employee senate report, Ms. Chandler and Ms. Monje.
President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of C E C and guests. My name is Shannon Monji, I'm an administrative specialist senior for the academic affairs division at PVCC. I am before you today as the co-chair of the interim employee senate. Along with me is my other co-chair, Anna Chandler, who is a student services analyst for the ACE program at Scottsdale Community College. Next slide, please. We would like to start off by saying a big, huge congratulations to all of our students for the class of 2021 who have graduated with their associate's degree, who are moving on to bachelor's degrees or got their certificates of completion. You guys are an inspiration to us all. It is you guys that are passionate to go to work every day and do what we do. What I ask from our students is that you please stay in touch with your campus, join the alumni programs, stay in touch with your faculty or that special staff member that got you to the place you are now, such as a tutor, an advisor or a coach. A quote that comes to mind that I would like to share with our students is one day you will tell your story of how you've overcome what you're going through now and it will become part of someone else's survival guide. Our students survived a global pandemic, a network system outage, things going on in their personal life, their work life with loved ones, and they still got through to the end. We are so proud of you and you guys are an inspiration for generations to come. Next slide, please. The employee senate is excited for the future that waits us. We would like to say congratulations to Chancellor Steven Gonzalez on his next two years as our interim chancellor. We know that you do not do this work as an interim, you serve us as a full fledged chancellor and we are looking forward to serving under your leadership and with your vision of shared governance. The other thing that the employee senate is excited in collaborating with is to serve our students and support them in obtaining bachelor's degrees. We know that won't happen right now, but we look forward to collaborating with our local campuses, with faculty and with leadership to develop the bachelor's degrees that our students want and to support them and to help them succeed. Next slide, please. The interim employee senate would like to show its gratitude to the governing board for their seven oh vote on the four percent retro increase for Maricopa employees. We would also like to share a huge thank you to our H R, our payroll teams, both at the district office and local campuses and our budget team for your continued work on getting these adjustments processed for employees. And we want to thank our employees for being patient as our colleagues work through a difficult system to get these done timely for us. This has been a wonderful boost for employees and we look forward to working with you as we implement the compensation strategy for years to come. I now turn the presentation over to my colleague, Anna Chandler.
Thank you, Shannon. President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of C E C and colleagues. We did want to also provide you with an update to our elections. We were able to successfully host an election across Maricopa District. There were some bumps in the road and we are looking forward to learning from them and working, working towards making it more efficient. But we were able to elect two co-presidents. Eleven members were elected for the employee senate. Nine members were elected for our sworn police officer council. Twenty five members were elected for our non-exempt council. Twenty two members were elected for exempt council. And at this time, we'd really like to thank the college presidents for supporting our efforts as we know this was a learning process for all and moving Maricopa forward for employee voice. The new employee representative will go through onboarding in June and the official first day of representation will begin on slide six. Next slide, please. With that said, we'd like to say a huge thank you to our senate continuity team. They were really the driving force that got us to host this election as successfully and move us to a point of success. Thank you to Election Buddy who assisted us with a confidential voting process. We did use this third party to ensure that there was confidentiality and fairness in the voting process. There was 120 or 1,233 ballots submitted out of the 3,261 eligible voters. So we were at a 30% vote. And again, we have some lessons learned, but we are really excited that our first election cycle was successful. We have new members coming on board with new ideas and we are looking forward to the next year to come. Next slide, please. And last, as we return to campus, we just wanted to give some perspective of what employees are looking to really accomplish. We want to be able to talk with students and see what they need to be successful as some are returning to campus, but others are finding that the modality of learning online works for them and how can we continue to support them? Collaborating with colleagues, managers and administration so that everyone is really involved in the return to campus process and really their voice is heard and what will help them be successful as employees as well. And again, just making sure that our return to campus is six, has a student success mindset and it's safety and a safe, safe for everyone to return. Please, we would just like everyone to remember that everyone has really gone through a difficult adaptation in the last year and a half. People's lives have been turned upside down. People have really tried to survive in this environment. And so we just want everyone to be patient and understanding with one another as we really look to come back to campus and, and learn to come back together as one and we can't wait to see each other soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your presentation and as we move forward in our return to campus conversations, we will be sharing and acknowledge the notes that you've presented. So thank you for, for that this evening. With that, we'll now move to the student life reports and we are here to welcome Rio Salado College Student Life and Leadership Advisor, Mr. John Bestane and student presenters, Ms. Peterson and Mr. Holmes. Take it away, Rio Salado.
Thank you and good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, C E C and guests. Antonette and I would like to first express our appreciation for allowing us the opportunity to come before you this evening and share with you some of the happenings at Rio. We have not only been able to stay connected during these times of what often seems at the time of disconnection, but we have been able to accomplish many things in the process. My name is Cordaro Holmes and I served as Rio Salado Colleges representative on the student senate this year. I actually spoke at a September meeting when the senate was introduced to the board. President Sullivan and I had an interesting conversation about some shoes I purchased for the meeting, only to be told that they wouldn't be seen. I've since used those shoes for other special occasions. In addition to being a student senator, I am also the Arizona Phi Theta Beta Chi Regional Development Officer, was co-lead for Rio's PTK 2020 College Project, one third of the honors and action team, acquired a level one and level two addiction and substance use disorder certification this year and just recently was invited and accepted the invitation to be a member of the Arizona Department of Education's Indian Education Advisory Council. Next slide.
Well, thank you, everyone, for having me. My name is Antonette Anderson and as you can see, I've been quite busy this entire year, which is just amazingly awesome. But the key things I would like to point out is that I had the opportunity to participate and advocate for Senate Bill 1453, which was passed and signed into law by Governor DeLucio. Next slide, please. Right here, we have some really awesome students. We have Lennon Jackson, who was our big pitch winner, and we also have Bryce Kristno, who was the all AZ and Coca Cola scholarship winner, as well as a student speaker for class 2021. Next slide, please.
In addition to the major accomplishments that Bryce and Lennon have, have in common, excuse me, another commonality between these two is their membership in Rio's Phi Theta Chi Chapter Alpha Theta American. This year, Alpha Theta American won APTK awards, two international and six regional. All those awards are distinguished chapter officer awarded to Sheila Pollard, a dual enrollment student who graduated from Mountain Point High School this year, as well as acquired an associate's degree in general studies at Rio, distinguished chapter member awarded to Amy Kraft, the distinguished advisor award and faculty scholar were both awarded to Dr. Inhay Peterson. The new president, the Paragon Award for New Presidents awarded to our college president, President Kate Smith. We were also recognized as a five star chapter and this is partly due to the work we did on the college project, which received an honorable mention and the many panels we held. Some of the panels we led were the perceptions of progress, which is the flyer you see on the right side of your screen, a panel on the LGBTQ community, the power of persuasion and financial freedom. All these panels were educational and a blast to be a part of. Next slide, please. Another educational gathering we held was a discussion that we had with the governing board's very own Ms. Kathleen Nguyen. Ms. Nguyen shared with us the evils of human trafficking and informed us that human trafficking is not something that just happens abroad, but it's something that is occurring right now in our very own community. She encouraged action and PTK is looking into getting more involved in the ending of this horror in the future. Next slide, please.
Here we have some more great accomplishments. This was brought on by our student public policy forum. We had a really engage, engaging panel, a discussion on civic engagement. And I also had the opportunity to be a part of this whole event, which is really awesome and as well as another Rio Salado student. Next slide, please.
A few of the things that occurred this year were a couple of student life experiences that were held so that students can get an understanding about some events that were occurring nationally and the circumstances surrounding them. There was also a panel on self-care and how to care for yourself during the pandemic. The student life experience held last year was a three day event that culminated with Amy Womback, a champion soccer player sharing with us her experiences and how we could use our very own experiences to fuel us to accomplish the things we hope to accomplish in our future. Next slide, please. A few other student panels that we had going on this year, we were very busy this year, a lot of, a lot of learning. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging Panel that was held with American Public University System. The keynote speaker at this panel was Dr. Terrell Strayhorn pictured at the top right. Dr. Strayhorn shared with us his thoughts on D E I B and the evidence he's found that it makes not only the student better and more successful, but the college as well. We also had a Black History Month student panel that Antonette was a part of and just recently we held an Asian Pacific Islander student panel. They both were amazing panels. A panel that I was on was a panel with the president's forum, which is an organization of college presidents throughout the nation, where in conversation with Rio's president Kate Smith, I shared my personal perspective on education and policy. This experience was definitely one of my favorite times of this year. Next slide, please. In closing, Antonette and I would like to thank Rio Salado Colleges Administration, Rio Salado Colleges Student Life Department, the governing board, President Sullivan, Chancellor Gonzalez, C E C and the guests present today, as well as Rio Salado Colleges President, President Kate Smith. Thank you for always taking the time out to engage with us students and remind us just how great we are. Thank you. And before we go off into the sun, if there's any questions, Antonette and I are more than willing to answer them. If not, have a great summer.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate our students as well and applaud all of the leadership responsibilities you've assumed and the job that you've done. So congratulations and keep wearing those shoes.
I definitely will.
Thank you, Cordaro.
Yes, and thank you. Any other comments? There being none, I'm going to move us then to our student senate reports and acknowledge that we now have a new student governing board member for the 21, 22 school year. Before we move forward to recognize our new student trustee member, I want to acknowledge that this was a tough year for Ms. Munoz and that we did not have an opportunity to meet in, in with her presence. And wish her certainly the best as she moves on to her next endeavors. So with that, would like to welcome Mr. Evans and I believe we have Dr. Ray Ostos, the district director of student affairs. So please go ahead.
Thank you. President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of C E C and guests. My name is Ray Ostos and I'm the district director for student affairs. I'm currently filling in for our A B C, Dr. Felicia Ganther. Tonight I'm here to proudly introduce our new step student governing board member, Quentin Evans, who will begin serving in this role on July 1st. Quentin is the current chair of the Maricopa Student Senate and is a student at Mesa Community College. Quentin is a political science major and is a civically engaged student who strives to represent and advocate for the student, a student voice of all students within the Maricopa Community Colleges. I'm proud to say that Quentin is here with us tonight and Quentin, if you're on, if you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you very much for that introduction. President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of the C E C and guests. My name is Quentin Evans and I am the outgoing chair of the Maricopa Student Senate. It is my honor to accept the role as the student governing board member and I look forward to representing the student voice on the board. While I have been selected to fill this wonderful and prestigious position, I want to be clear about one thing. I'm, while I may be from Mesa Community College, I'm here to represent all 10 colleges and all 200,000 students within the Maricopa County Community Colleges District. I'm not here for myself, I am here for them. Their tuition matters, their voices matters, their health and mental health. Their tuition matters, their voices matters, their health and mental health matters. They matter. This position matters much more than all of that stuff. It matters that their voices heard and that is what I intend to do. Communication, communication is the key to all of this. And while of course I am going to be communicating with them, I strive to communicate with this board as well. Going forward, I have a bright outlook for the future. There's no use in being negative. This board has done great things and Maricopa Community Colleges is the best district network of schools, in my opinion, in the whole country. Going forward, there is such a great way that we can go about everything. One where we can pave a way to helping our students as much as we can. With that, thank you for your time. If there are any questions now, or of course in the future, I'm happy to address them.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I can, uh, speak, I believe on behalf of the full board to say that we are excited for your participation and look forward to you working with us. Want to offer you our congratulations again and know that we'll have a good year ahead of us. So, uh, I'm sure the students and everyone are pleased with your selection and are looking forward to your participation with us as well, bringing to mind, uh, the consideration and concerns of the student body. So thank you and, and best wishes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, moving on then, uh, the next item on the agendas are emeritus awards and recognitions. Tonight, there are two, uh, emeritus awards, emeritus distinction awards, one to Ms. Delia Escalante and the other to Dr. Chris Ashley. But as we, again, as I've stated in the, in the past, establish new normal processes across our system. One area that we have begun returning to is recognizing the outstanding contributions of our faculty as they retire from our system. Following the board meeting in which we have honorees, we will include an article recognizing the recipients in the Maricopa Newsletter that will include a short profile. Our board assistant will forward the newsletter to all of the recipients. We are hopeful that we will be able to celebrate these distinctions in a more formal manner sometime in the near future. Thank you and congratulations. With that, now I'm going to move us to the chancellor report. And, uh, we have some video files for presentation. Reminder that when those occur, you may control the volume and size of the video. Options for these are in the bottom right of the video. Anyone who called indirectly with their phone will not be able to hear the audio, however. You will be able to watch and hear the video once it is posted to our YouTube page. And with that, uh, Dr. Gonzalez, we're ready for your report.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the governing board. Um, let me get my page up here. Thank you. Well, first, let me start off by, um, by welcoming, uh, Quentin Evans to the board of looking forward to working with him. And I'm sure that this is going to be a great opportunity and experience for both of us to learn, um, about this process. And so, um, the other thing that I would like to do before we get into this, and I've got several items here, um, but I, I just want to congratulate the graduates, uh, this year that have been through a very unique year that have persevered. And we had many forms of commencement, um, from virtual to car commencements where students and family members and friends and supporters would drive through to pick up, um, their swag and, and, uh, and diplomas, or at least the, the covers for diplomas. I saw many pictures and there was quite a air of an excitement and, um, pride through those. And so I just want to congratulate everybody. Um, and I also want to thank again our employees or faculty, staff and administration across the system for hanging in there for another tough, um, academic year. You know, just also say congratulations on your hard work and effort. I think it's paid off. And as we saw the various commencement exercises, we know that that's what we are here for, to get many, many more students across that stage and on to the next level. So, um, a heartfelt thank you to employees. Thank you for hanging in there. And, um, and I also want to thank our governing board for providing the support and leadership during this past year when there's been so much uncertainty. You've, you've been, you know, steadfast in your approach and your support. And so we really thank you for that. On behalf of the employees of Maricopa, we thank you for your leadership. As we are approaching the fall semester, we are closely monitoring enrollment. And we are fourteen weeks away from the start of the fall semester and our headcount is down a negative three point eight percent, which is a far cry from where we were last year at this time, when we were probably experiencing the, the upper, uh, thirty, you know, twenty-five to thirty-five percent. So, um, looking better and we've got plans to really hit it hard and fast over the next several weeks to improve enrollment as we approach the fall semester. So we will keep you apprised through weekly snapshots and, um, through our, through my chancellor's update at these board meetings. I'd like to let everybody know that I have started to have some face-to-face meetings with our governing board members. I've had three of those so far. It's been, um, really nice to get back in front of one another and I just have to tell everybody that it's an adjustment to come back and to begin meet, uh, meet face-to-face with people. Although I, I enjoy it, I find that I, I can't mute myself and I can't just walk away and grab a snack and come back to the table. I have to be present the entire time. And I think we're all going to face that as many of us come back face-to-face, but it's, they've been great meetings and it's been great to see, um, the governing board members face-to-face that I've met with so far. And I look forward to uh, future meetings here, um, as we move through the summer and start the fall semester. Um, I want to remind everybody that we, we're going to have some work sessions, uh, through the month of June, particularly on June eighth, where we will, um, focus on how we will continue to serve the students through the fall um, semester that's coming up and beyond in this post-pandemic world. Um, we will also look at, the, uh, task force recommendations that I, uh, created. Actually, I created a task force to provide, uh, general task force recommendations. So we'll have a discussion on that on June eighth too. So I hope that all can be in attendance and I'm looking forward to discussions that we will have with you as a board. The legislative agenda that you all approved, um, has been moving along quite nicely. Uh, it's likely coming to a close here and then perhaps by the, as early as the end of this week or maybe next week as the, legislature continues its work and is coming to a conclusion soon. So, we of course already are thinking about what the next legislative agenda may look like for us. And we hope that by September's board meeting and definitely no later than October, that you as a board will be adopting, um, approving a new legislative agenda that we can begin to use moving forward for, uh, next year's legislative session. So please stay tuned, um, there as well. Um, some of the things that we accomplished, I have shared with you in our weekly snapshots and in previous updates at our board meetings. Um, but since our last board meeting, um, as many of you, as all of you know, and hopefully as everyone in our community knows, um, Senate Bill fourteen fifty-three was signed by Governor Ducey on May fourth, which authorizes the community colleges in the state of Arizona to offer the four-year baccalaureate. We're extremely excited about that. Again, I want to, um, thank our board members, thank our faculty and staff, thank our legislators, thank our community members. This was a, um, a village-wide effort to come together to move this across the finish line. So thank you all for your, your great effort and support there. And, and just as a first update, a group that has been tasked with developing a process already had its first meeting and is well on its way to getting us to a place where as I identified in my goals to the governing board, that a minimum of five will be, um, offered by the fall of twenty twenty-three, if not sooner. Uh, we will continue to provide, um, updates to this board and to their community and stakeholders on our progress related to this bill and this new authority. Um, one of the ways that we're also doing this is a state of a district, um, inaugural event. Over the last two days, we've been, uh, videotaping, um, champions of Maricopa. We've had a couple governing board members participate. Of course, I participated. And this was an opportunity to share with the community, um, this, this new authority that we have. And to also include what we are calling Merrick, uh, Champions of Maricopa. These are people that we are recognizing in our communities that were instrumental in helping this legislation pass. We hope that the state of a, that, we don't hope, we, we plan that the state of a district event that we're holding, um, while it's going to be virtual this first time, that in subsequent years that we can come together in a space and, um, share what our district is up to. Um, the final thing related to legislation is that the STEM formula funding, um, work continues, uh, so far in the budget bills that were introduced yesterday. Uh, there's a, a four million dollar Maricopa STEM funding, and that's an increase from one point six million dollars in appropriation over the previous fiscal year. And, um, we are also, uh, included in that a seven point five million dollar community college scholarship as part of the designers recently released Arizona's Back to Work Plan. So please stay tuned there. There's, there's work that we continue to do behind the scenes to get us to, uh, a place where our STEM funding is at the, uh, uh, the formula, which would actually bring us to about ten point three or ten point four million. So please stay tuned there. But we'll, we'll, we'll be happy with one-time funding, but we want to see ongoing funding in that space. Um, the, the next portion of this, um, update includes hearing from members of our Maricopa affinity resource groups, and you're going to hear from United Tribal Employees Council, uh, by Chris Sundust. You're also going to hear from our Asian Pacific Islander Association, Dr. Klein Namu, Jessica Wong, and Ken Mariwama will be speaking. Um, I'm going to remind these folks that because we've got a total of three presentations, including the Maricopa Foundation, that we'd be mindful of our time through this and stay to the, um, ten minutes. It's been allotted. And I believe I've given fifteen minutes to the Maricopa Foundation. Um, so please keep that in mind, um, presenters as we go through this next segment. So with that said, I'm happy to turn this over to Chris to present the, uh, United Tribal Employees Council Report.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Uh, good evening, President Sullivan, governing board members, uh, Chancellor Gonzalez and members of C E C. Yeah, it's S J, Chris Sundust, you know, she have be put one initially, give the cheat you about just change key on it, does she change what is you need, does she know? Um, my name is Chris Sundust and I'm the Vice President for the United Tribal Employees Council. And I just shared with you my traditional introduction because that is the proper thing to do in a public setting. Um, I'm now, I'm from the Navajo Nation, and so that was my four clans and where I'm from on the Navajo Reservation. Um, so next slide, please. So I'm going to share with you a little bit about the United Tribal Employee Council. And just a quick overview, we provide support and information on employment, cultural awareness and other diversity issues unique to American Indians. We also address challenges facing employees and explore opportunities to create, or to recruit American Indian employees and students. Um, we also serve as role models, mentors and advisors to native students and we act as liaisons between the colleges and our community partners and tribal communities. Next slide, please. Um, these are the survey officers, Braxton Cabanero, he's our president, Lyra Smith is our secretary. Uh, Ryan Camper is our treasurer and I am the vice president, as I stated earlier. Um, and we are, we have been in these positions for the, the past two years, serving in UTEC. Next slide. And just some data about, um, native, natives in the Maricopa system. So in fall twenty twenty, we had four thousand six hundred and nine students who self-identified as American Indian, and this number represents four point seven percent of the total Maricopa student population. We have eighty-five full-time American Indian employees as well as sixty-two parts, part-time. And we also, um, in terms of tribal communities, Arizona is home to twenty-two tribal nations. And each of these have their unique culture, history and language. And I'd just like to acknowledge that all ten of the Maricopa Community Colleges, as well as its district and foundation offices, are located on the traditional homelands of the Akamal, Autumn, Peepash and Yabapai. They are the original caretakers of this land where we teach, learn and serve. Next slide, please. Some areas of focus for UTEC, um, have been in, in the realm of cultural awareness program. So we, we've hosted as well as supported, um, at the colleges' cultural awareness programs. Each year, we also hold the annual American Indian, um, convocation. Of course, because of COVID, we weren't able to have our traditional convocation, but we were able to hold a drive-through one this year, which was very fun. And I'll share some photos, uh, from that event later in this presentation. Um, and then, another item, um, that we've, we've been, we've been working to address is Indigenous Peoples' Day. So in twenty twenty, the state of Arizona joined thirteen other states in honoring Indigenous Peoples' Day. And this is just an opportunity to honor and recognize an accurate representation of indigenous peoples and communities. And our hope is that, um, later this year, that Maricopa will join the state of Arizona and other state universities and acknowledging Indigenous Peoples' Day. And then lastly, the tribal land acknowledgement, as I shared, um, just before this, uh, we have, we were tasked by, in January of this past year, we were pleased to accept, uh, direction from C E C to take the lead on developing a comprehensive, inclusive process for the development of tribal land acknowledgement for not just the district, but for, um, colleges as well. Um, and we just want to emphasize that this, the documents that we produce were definitely, uh, they're definitely very much a process. They're not just, um, text or words, but a bridge to ongoing relational growth and maintenance with the communities that we serve. And it's our hope that the recommendations, um, and suggestions that we made, uh, provide a framework for each of the colleges, departments, employ and employees to expand their understanding of and commitment to our relationship with not just the lands that we reside on, but the communities that we serve. Next slide, please. And just to share some of the events that we've done in the past, um, like I said, cultural awareness training. We hosted, uh, a couple of years ago at Scottsdale Community College, we invited Iris Pretty Paint, um, to share more about, um, native culture, tribal sovereignty and other issues, um, in order to raise awareness about indigenous, uh, peoples, not just in Maricopa, but in, but across the country. So this was a very well-attended event. And actually, there were follow-up events, um, at a couple of colleges, um, where they, they invited Iris Pretty Paint back to, um, to share at their individual college. And here, uh, pictured is some of our faculty at S E C, our native faculty that are at S E C. And actually, on the far right is Manny Pino. Um, he's actually retiring this year sadly. So today, we actually said our farewell to him. Next slide, please. And as promised, here are some photos from our drive-through convocation that happened, that happened a couple of Saturdays ago. Uh, these are members of UTEC who showed up that day to cheer on and celebrate with our students that showed up. Um, so those are our stools. And then in the next slide, you can see, um, our students who showed up that day. And as you can see, uh, they received their stools, they got to take photos, they brought their families. And they even wore, uh, some of them wore their regalia. And it was a very fun day. We're just, we're so excited that we were able to provide even a small celebration for the students that day. And next slide. And finally, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the time that you've provided this evening for me to share more about our, um, our group uh, and some of the issues that we are trying to address and the initiatives that we're trying to pursue as well. And, um, I, again, I just thank you for the time that you've provided on the agenda for me tonight.
Well, thank you, Chris. I really appreciate the presentation and the good work that UTEC does across our system. Next is Asian Pacific Islander Association, Dr. Namu, Ms. Wong and Mr. Mariwama.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good evening, President Sullivan, governing board members, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the C E C. And guests joining us tonight, my name is Klein Namuo, and I am the interim president at Phoenix College. I'm actually here in a different capacity tonight, though. Um, here is the president of the Asian Pacific Islander Association, one of the Maricopa affinity resource groups you've heard from over the last few board meetings. Uh, next slide, please. I won't spend too long on this slide, but our group spent a considerable amount of time revising both our mission and vision for A P I A. Some of the words that really stand out to me here are unify, support, awareness and voices. Next slide, please. I'd like to thank the board for your interest in our work. Thank Dr. Gonzalez for both figuratively and literally handing us the microphone. We've noticed a renewed interest in our work as many have been, who have been disengaged, are now finding their way back to our meetings and are contributing in meaningful ways in support of one another and support. Are now finding their way back to our meetings and are contributing in meaningful ways in support of one another, in support of the movement. Around social justice. The updated mission and vision statements are just one of those ways. In addition to the flurry of events and and activities you'll learn about today. I also want to offer a shout out to all of the Maricopa Affinity Resource Group leads. For many of them, this is their third or fourth hat they wear on top of their primary responsibilities. Of their jobs and other related obligations, and we are all fueled by a deep passion to serve. The first message that I shared with Phoenix College went something like this. That we were all people before we're employees, we're fathers, mothers, sisters, brothers, sons, daughters, all before we are employees. But in terms of equity, diversity, creating an inclusive culture. It means a lot that our employer, our workplace, where we give so much of ourselves. That our employer recognizes that we are people after we are employees. That when we leave work, we interact with the world in these bodies, with these identities. So it means a lot to be highlighted in this way tonight. And the way other groups have been highlighted in previous months. You're going to hear from two of our emerging leaders in Maricopa. Who have truly led our membership through this pandemic, and I'm so proud of them. Jessica Wong is a Student Services Manager at Rio Salado. And Dr. Ken Maruyama is a Grants Officer Senior at Mesa Community College. So President Smith and President Berkwon, thank you for letting us borrow these superstars to advance the important work. Of A P I A. Before I hand it off to Jessica, I want to give a big shout out to Dewey. I want to give a big shout out to Ariana especially. Ariana has seen A P I A through its most lean times, through its entire history. And it's because of her that I'm involved in this organization. So Ariana, thank you for that. And with that, allow me to hand it over to Jessica for the next few slides.
Thank you so much, Dr. Namuo. So as he was saying, it's been kind of up and down with A P I A membership. We had a really big boost. Due to the affinity group sessions that were put together by the Chancellor's Office last summer. And that really helped kind of revitalize our A P I A group. And then we also took advantage. Of the virtual remote work setting to really connect during bi-weekly meetings over Zoom, connect with our students through various virtual events such as our potluck. And engage with all employees, such as the employee panel discussion that was held by P V C C. Next slide. As you can see with our population, we have about four hundred A P I employees and a little over seventy-eight hundred A P I students. That makes up about eight percent of our student population. So it's really important that our faculty and staff. Are really engaged on our campuses and making sure that our student population sees. Faculty and staff who look like them and can go to us for whether it's formal or informal mentorship, which we'll talk about in a minute. Next slide. So this is what I want to spend the majority of my time on is our four areas of focus. So our first area of focus or our first pillar is cultural awareness, so promoting cultural awareness through various events. So May is actually Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So at all of our college campuses, we've been having a variety of different sessions. Whether it's a show and tell at Mesa Community College, a virtual mochi-making event at Chandler Gilbert. Or a presentation from an Imam talking about Ramadan at Rio Salado. So really just promoting cultural awareness to all employees. The second pillar is employee advocacy, so mentoring of A P I staff. Promoting leadership opportunities, professional development opportunities. Ken and I actually had the opportunity to present on A P I A at a national conference. So that was really huge for us to be able to kind of have that experience as well. The third pillar is student advocacy. So annually, we always award our A P I A scholarship. As well as hold our A P I convocation celebration, which this year was virtual. We're looking to formalize an A P I mentorship program in addition to our existing student club. And this year, which we'll talk about in a minute, we also had our first A P I student conference held in October. So we invited. Not only all staff from ten colleges, but also community members from Phoenix, from California, nationwide. To participate and engage with our A P I students. And then lastly, our community connection, so participating in cultural community events. And then collaborating with community groups such as the Asian Corporate Entrepreneur Leaders. And then Ken's going to go ahead and wrap us up.
Good evening, board members. My name is Ken Mariyama from Mesa Community College. There are only two A P I student clubs in ten Maricopa community colleges. One is in Mesa and the other is in Chandler Gilbert Community College. At Mesa Community College, Thauen, Jess, and I volunteer to serve as A P I student club advisors. Beyond the A P I A members. Last month, we celebrated A P I Heritage Month. One of the A P I student leaders, Ms. Maggie Tron. She reached out to two A P I faculty members, Dr. Lee Tron Nguyen and Professor Robert Kioni. They conducted a mental health panel discussion by using Facebook technology. Next, please. Maggie also worked with Professor Michelle Young to discuss mindfulness and stress management issues. A P I students are concerned about issues affecting our community. Student club activities must be fun and purposeful, otherwise students won't stay in the club. Even in the virtual world, we could have fun and celebrate our accomplishment. The Office of Student Life and Leadership has been very supportive for the success of our student club activities. Next, please. Chandler Gilbert A P I Student Club is also very active. Iris, Sonia, and Jackson, three of them served as student club advisors at the college. The Chandler Gilbert Group hosted a YouTube workshop by inviting a guest speaker from A S U. Dr. Cassie Nakagawa to speak about model minority issues. The event was very successful. Last four, as Jessica said. Dr. Felicia Gunther encouraged A P I A to host a student success conference dedicated to A P I students. We A P I A members made the best effort in organizing the conference in two months. It was a lot of volunteer work, yet we had a great time together by hosting. The conference where about one hundred students, faculty, staff, and the community members participate. Dr. Stephanie Fuji served as the keynote speaker at the conference. She has been a role model for A P I students and employees in our community. A P I A with more, but mighty. Now I turn the mic to Dr. Namuo.
You can, as Jessica mentioned, May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and I just want to encourage. Everyone to celebrate and commemorate the incredible contributions of Asian Americans and. Pacific Islanders throughout the history of our country. On behalf of all of our A P I A employees, thanks so much for your time and attention tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Muo and team, we appreciate your contributions this evening in this presentation, and of course, more importantly, your contributions across our system. And we're sure our students who. You know. Are a part of this group, have to be as successful as possible. And and for our governing board, I hope that through this experience that you've had an opportunity to. Be the diversity across our system and, you know, in our employee groups and the good work that they all do to help all of our students. And and represent their communities to be as successful as possible. So thank you very much for that opportunity. Before we go into the final presentation of the Chancellor's Update, I just want to say a few remarks here. You're going to have an opportunity to hear this foundation report. On its progress over these past many months. Presenting will be Rudy Parga, Chairman of the Board, and also Stephanie Hertzberg, incoming Board Chair, as well as Brian Spicker, the President and CEO of the Foundation. These are some things that I noticed in this presentation. There's a tension to collaboration, so we appreciate the collaborative nature that the foundation has with the district and the colleges. You'll also notice that the foundation's efforts are closely aligned with the district's goals. You'll notice that the foundation is working diligently raising revenue. You'll hear more about that in this particular report. And I want to underscore the important role that I play as interim chancellor in fundraising for our system, as well as our president's play in fundraising. So we're going to be looking at some things over the next several weeks and how we can improve. What those efforts look like and what the roles and responsibilities are included when it comes to fundraising for our system. Driving philanthropic revenue growth is critical to the success of our system. And we appreciate all of those that have contributed and served on this foundation and to the many, many that have given millions upon millions to our foundation. So with that said, I will turn it over now to, I believe it will be Brian, and I apologize if it's someone else.
It's it's okay, Chancellor. It'll be it'll be Rudy. And. Ending this presentation, we have Tabitha Campos, a recent graduate of South Mountain Community College. So thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, Rudy.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor again. Members of the C E C and guests. As mentioned, my name is Rudy Parga, and I have had the privilege. Of serving as the Chair of the Foundation Board for the past two years. I just want to take a moment personally and behalf of the entire board. I've had the opportunity over the past few years of working closely with many of those serving on the governing board. And I just want to take a moment to to acknowledge and be thankful for the time that you have devoted to the foundation, the support. As the Chancellor indicated, I think the hallmark of the work that has been done. I will underscore the collaborative nature as well as the the communication. The good news is that my colleague Stephanie Hertzberg, as good as she is in terms of her being. A stalwart member of the community at large in the business community as well. She's even a better person, so she is going to do a tremendous job in leading the Foundation Board for the next couple of years. Ms. Macias, may I have you please advance the slide deck to the mission slide, please? Thank you. Just a few things before we get into the presentation that you're going to be hearing on. Our presentation will last approximately fifteen minutes. And we are going to start that presentation with a reflection from one of our recent graduates. From the Construction Trades Institute at South Mountain Community College. Before we get into that, I just want to again underscore the importance of the workforce development efforts. That have been led through the hard work of our Chancellor and Brian, our President, CEO, and the board's work as well. The gentleman that you will be hearing from is part of one of our other board members. Company McCarthy Construction, and I think when you hear from him, you'll be able to hear firsthand. The impact that the workforce development program has had on the individual. So without further ado, the individual is Mr. Kendrol Billups. And I would invite your attention so that we can briefly hear the mission statement. Ms. Macias, if we could go ahead and please play the statement. Thank you.
Yes, just waiting for it to load up.
Thank you very much.
Hey, hey, Elza, it's Ryan. You may want to cancel this and then try to reload it. I'm just seeing a black screen. It loaded a lot faster than we tried it earlier, Elza, so try it again. There we go. That looks better.
I'm sorry. Can I just have everybody mute mute their systems for a little while so I can restart the the presentation and not hear all the feedback?
My name is Kendrol Billups, and I graduated from S M C C Construction Trades Institute. In twenty nineteen, I started going to South Mountain Community College for architecture. In twenty twenty, that's when the pandemic hit. That's when I received an email from South Mountain Community College. They're offering a construction career. Some of it's online and some of it is in class, which worked out pretty good for me because I have kids and a family. The partnership they have with McCarthy was great. They came in. They had a recruiter and a couple of superintendents come in and talk to us, which was pretty cool to see because. Superintendents are the ones that's running the job sites and they're super busy. So the fact that they took time. Out of their day to come talk to the students showed me that it was a good company. They looked at my resume. They got me in contact with the right people and they set me up for an interview. They got me hired and and I like what I do. Construction, it's hard work pays off, but you you feel it. You feel it a little bit more because you're learning. Stuff that you can that you're going to have for the rest of your life.
This is Rudy Parga. I didn't know if anyone was able to hear that presentation or not.
It was great.
Okay, good. Thank you. For some reason, I wasn't able to hear it on my end, but I'm glad others were able to. Thank you very much for Ms. Macias. If we could advance the slide to the mission, thank you. I'm not going to go through this line by line by any means, but I just want to highlight just a couple of things. With respect to the the vision statement within the bolded language. What has brought the 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 foundation and the different members together is that we're all driven. By the belief that everyone has the opportunity to improve their lives through education. That is the driving force behind the group of individuals who are always willing to give their time, talent, and treasure. In advancing that kind of concept which guides us. Just a couple of things. Since two thousand fourteen, the foundation has received thirty-six million in contributions. And awarded almost twenty-seven million in scholarships and programmatic support benefiting the entire district. What this means in essence is that we make post-secondary education and certifications accessible and affordable. And we do this in partnership with the district and colleges. So again, just very briefly, I wanted to kind of point out a few things. With that, Brian, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Rudy, and hopefully Chancellor, with the technology stuff, it doesn't count towards our fifteen minutes, but we're we're moving along. So next slide, Elza. Thank you. What's really important, as Rudy pointed out, is this past year, the last fiscal year nineteen twenty. You see that we have made the platinum seal of transparency. A big part of that was really engaging with our board at a higher level and using metrics and impact. In measuring the results that the foundation creates. Four thousand two hundred and thirty-four scholarships, five point two million in contributions. Both including scholarships and program supports with nine hundred and thirty-three funds. Next slide. What's important is, as we look at this, it's important that the foundation is not only steady. And creating continuity in how we raise dollars, but we're responsive to the changes in the community. But what's really important in this report that you're hearing from us today is that there are characteristics that you can't see. That make all of this possible, and it's the collaboration, the trust, the generosity from our community. High-performing teams working together and strong systems leadership. You're going to see that throughout the rest of these slides, but you can see when the pandemic hit. We increased our student emergency support and fundraising, achieving five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And the digital platforms that were used to provide student supports were critical in immediately helping our students. We did this in partnership with our Resource Development Council, our colleges, and the district. Next slide. I want to go a little deeper because when you look at that, the the dollars we raised. It was really because of targeted campaigns. And within that raising money for the pandemic. We actually created a comprehensive fundraising and communication effort across all the colleges and the foundation. And it steadily reported out to our donors what we were doing as we were raising dollars. This led to winning a Case Gold Award in fundraising. We exceeded our. We exceeded our goal in this targeted campaign by $100,000. And what's important to notice, CASE is an international organization of higher education institutions. It stands for the Council for the Advancement and Support of Education and has over 90,000 educational advancement professionals from universities and community colleges. So we were proud of this accomplishment. But really, the pride is in the faces of these individuals that we were able to help persist and maintain their educational goals. Next slide. Most recently, you, many of you participated on this, in this presentation in our targeted campaign, Be a Student's Hero. This is a Maricopa's first day of giving. And it was April 29th and President Sullivan, I can recall a conversation you and I had well over a year ago. You had asked if we were going to be part of Giving Tuesday. Well, we took it a step further, thank goodness, because of the Resource Development Council, our partners in this work, and the Foundation, and created a Maricopa Day of Giving. You can expect to see this day continue year over year and the results improve as we move this forward. We learned a lot this first go-round. We learned we can do this. We also learned there were challenges with the platform. But what was great is we got new gifts and returning gifts from donors who may have not made a gift recently. So we're going to continue with these targeted campaigns. They are successful and we expect to see growth there. I'm going to move quickly to a slide that you've seen before. It's our philanthropic revenue comparison over time. The $6 million level, as you recall when I presented this the last time we were together, is when the Foundation ran a community-wide campaign. Well, we've not run a campaign. Obviously, the pandemic and the national election were two major impediments. But I'll tell you, every day is a campaign day at the Foundation and with our resource development partners from each college. And so you can see in 2020, in the midst of a pandemic, we want to bend the needle. And so you see a 10% increase in fundraising and that is our fiscal year 21 goal. Next slide. So I'm going to go a little deeper now and where are we at with that goal? So when you think of the Foundation and how it works, we really work in two areas. It's individual gifts and grants. And this slide depicts for a two-year comparison, knowing full well that fiscal year 21 is not complete. But I can share with you the excitement that we have met our goal. In fact, we've surpassed it. CASE, the organization I spoke of before, actually produced the Charitable Giving Report Spotlight in May of 2021. And in the year 2020, higher education actually saw a 5.5% decrease in giving. The Foundation, our colleges, the district, we're up 10%. In fact, it's looking like we're going to be up 12.5% this year. So a big shout out to all that and the generosity of our community that made this happen. Next slide. I'm going to show you where we're at with our grants. What's really important in this graph is we're seeing a 62% success rate. That is 62% of the grants that we have written have been awarded. And that is an awesome rate as of March 31st. And that has improved since then. We've actually have another 100,000. And you see in this slide, some of the featured awards. What's important to note is the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community really stepped forward with support for food and emergency funds, as well as the Virginia G. Piper Trust. Intel provided a $115,000 grant to jumpstart incredible work that's doing in workforce development around artificial intelligence. And we appreciate our partnership with the Workforce and Economic Development Office and Darcy and her team, as well as our other colleges. Next slide. So when you think of the Foundation, then you think of there are two governing principles. One is endowed funds which last in perpetuity and then restricted funds which are paid out faster, but they're restricted around a specific activity. And so this is a new metric, but I share that with you because it's informing the Foundation and our colleges on where we're at. And if you look at the greenish bar, what you're seeing is a definite increase in restricted funds. And that's because we're seeing a tendency of our donors to want to put some of their resources to immediate work. And that's what restricted funds do. Endowments are a legacy play where a spendable rate comes out of the corpus each year. But we're tracking this, we're unpacking it, and I'm glad to see that in 2021, so far as of now, we're up on both approaches, endowed and restricted. Moving real quickly to the outputs of what we provide in this slide is really program support and scholarships. So you can see by the greenish bar that we are increasing the output to the students with program supports, to the colleges with program supports, as well as scholarships. What aren't included in here are the other investments the Foundation makes in moving planned giving forward, as well as our legal support, software support, et cetera. So this is giving you a bit of a snapshot of where we're at in the work of our 2021 year. So I'm going to end my portion of this with one more slide and it's about workforce development. This is a growing opportunity for the Foundation and our Board. Our Board is deeply involved and working hand-in-hand with Foundation staff, as well as college and district staff in creating the resources necessary for these initiatives move forward. And you can see a few of them listed on this slide. So in working with Darcy and her team, leading Intel to invest and co-create an artificial intelligence degree program that's being delivered by our brother and sister colleges, there was over $215,000 raised in that effort. If you look at the South Mountain Construction Trades Institute, what we're seeing there is we've got donors, construction groups who are interested in investing and sponsoring that program that's supporting our students. In Mesa Promise, the city and our colleagues in Mesa, with the support of the Foundation, have raised over $78,000 towards Mesa Promise. So this effort, this collaboration with Workforce and Economic Development Office with our colleges is really a growing concern. We see a lot of opportunity here, moving here in the future. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Chair-elect Stephanie Hertzberg, who is Principal at Mindset Strategies, and thank you for the opportunity to be here with you.
Good evening, everyone. Elza, if you could just go to the next slide, one more. Thank you Governing Board President Sullivan, Governing Board Members, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC and guests for the opportunity to present the work that the Foundation is doing. As Brian mentioned, I'm Stephanie Hertzberg, incoming Board Chair. And before we entertain questions, we'd like to share one last quick student reflection from an incredible individual joining us live, a recent graduate from South Mountain Community College, Ms. Tabitha Campos.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Tabitha Hasmin Correa Campos. Please call me Tap Campos for short. I'm a student from South Mountain Community College. I just graduated with an AA in General Studies, an AS in Behavioral Health Studies with a certificate in Basic Behavioral Health. I've been able to serve as President for Phi Theta Chi Alpha Eta Delta Chapter, Student Senator, and help advance my chapter to a five-star chapter, among other achievements, such as All AZ Academic Team, President's List and various other scholarships. When the pandemic hit, I knew my leadership qualities would be put to the test and it is amazing to see my hard work pay off. I thank the members of the Board for this recognition. My goal is to prepare for the LSAT, attend law school and eventually have my own firm, create a legacy for my sons and the future of SMCC. The Emergency Relief Fund helped me focus on my studies by providing me with the opportunity to take time off from work, focus on my studies and have worked on my vehicle as I delivered for Postmates during the pandemic to help my family. I was able to graduate with high distinction this last Thursday and I feel I would not have been as successful as I was in school last year had it not been for the assistance of the Foundation Scholarship. Thank you all. This has been an honor and a privilege.
Thank you Tabitha for sharing your story with us today. I am always so impressed by the students and it is why we give our time on the Foundation Board. As you can see, the Foundation has been very busy and we plan to continue to keep the momentum going, provide opportunity and access to education. And we couldn't do it without the help from all of you. So thank you for your support. And at this time, you will take any questions if there are any.
Dr. Gonzalez and the Foundation Board, in the interest of time, I'm going to move us to the next step in the agenda, but I know that we can always invite you back for Q and A and certainly entertain those questions through Dr. Gonzalez to Mr. Spicker. Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any other comments?
I do not, President Sullivan, members of the Board. Again, thank you for your time and your patience this evening.
Certainly. And I wanted to thank all of the affinity groups who presented this evening. It's always good for us to have more knowledge and have an experience through your presentation with those individuals. And so thank you very much for that. And certainly to the Foundation, congratulations to you, Tabitha. We're very proud of you. And to the entire Foundation Board for your efforts this year, they were outstanding. And certainly the recognition you've received through awards, et cetera, is very inspiring for all of us. And we will all continue to open our checkbooks for you, or Zelli, or whatever it is these days, so that you continue to do your good work. And thank you very much for your time this evening. With that, you're very welcome. So with that, I'm going to acknowledge that we have no speakers on the citizens interim and move us to consideration of the consent agenda. By moving to the consent agenda, we will note all items under the section of the agenda are consent matters unless they are being moved from the consent agenda at this time. Do any Board members or the Chancellor wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved, Mrs. Nguyen.
Thank you. Is there a second?
My second.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath. So there's a motion to approve the consent agenda, a motion and a second. All those in favor vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none opposed, the motion carries on a 7-0 vote with all Board members voting. Moving on then to the non-consent action items. Next on the agenda is approval of the sale of a 6.9 acre acres of vacant land at the northeast corner of South Fortia Street and East Cottonwood Lane to Provestis Development Solutions LLC on behalf of the Legacy Traditional Schools for $3.6 million. Do I have a motion to approve the sale of this land?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. Is there a second?
Second by Ms. Smith.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve this land sale. So with that, I'm going to ask Board members to say aye. If they approve the motion.
Is there no discussion?
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mrs. Nguyen. I know, I'm anxious to get to the vote here. I apologize. I know, I know, I know. Thank you very much. I apologize for that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion, Mrs. Nguyen?
I just, we're going to vote. I just wanted to just make a, we've been given a lot of information and I just want to say that I am grateful for all the questions that I have answered separately and I appreciate the staff for doing that. My only recommendation going forward as we sell assets that the college has is that we get current and appropriate appraisals. And I'll leave it at that. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the motion? There being none, the motion's on the table. All those Board members vote by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, the motion carries at 7-0. Thank you very much, Board members. With that, I'm going to move us to first read on information items to employment and separations for March 2021 through April 16, 2021. Are there any questions on that item? Being none, I'll move us to the first read, where approval of the addition of the Remote and Virtual Work Policy to the Staff Policy Manual. Are there any questions on this item as a first read? There being none, we'll move forward. Monitoring Reports, Budget Analysis Report Fund, General Unrestricted Fund for the eight months ending 4/30/2021. Are there any comments or questions?
It's 10 months.
I was reading my text. Okay, 10 months. Why? I see. Okay. Why? Thank you Kathleen, keeping me with my toes. So with that, thank you. Are there any questions? Being none, I'm going to move us then to our community reports and I'm going to start with you, Ms. Smith. Do you have any comments for us this evening?
Sorry about that. Having a mute issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just wanted to thank all of the presenters today for giving us their insight, especially the students. And I wanted to offer my congratulations to all of the graduates for their perseverance. And I also wanted to let my fellow Board members know that in the coming weeks, we are moving forward with some of the Policy Committee work and we will have a work session and I look forward to that experience with you soon. And that concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Bitter Smith, do you have any comments for us this evening?
I do, President Sullivan. Thank you very much. And again, I would echo the comments of Ms. Smith about the student presentation, always very helpful and inspiring. Just two quick things. I wanted the Board to know, I did do a presentation last week for some political leaders in the side of District 24, primarily on the Bachelor for Your Degree Bill. Great excitement from those folks about those possibilities and great interest in seeing it happen and they'll be following what we're doing, which is very encouraging. Also want to echo a congratulations to the graduates and particularly thank the leadership at the Festival Community for inviting me to provide some written words of congratulations and encouragement to those graduates. I was honored to do that and I certainly watched the virtual ceremony. And as Dr. Gonzalez alluded to, very creative opportunities to recognize graduates and I commend our individual colleges for being able to do that. And that's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Bitter Smith. Mrs. McGrath.
I have no report this month.
Okay, so move on. Dr. Norene.
Oh, thank you. Like everyone else, congratulate-
Oh, thank you. Like everyone else, congratulations, class of 2021. It was great to, I want to, and thank Mesa and Gateway and South for allowing me to be part of their graduations. I especially enjoyed South Mountain's commencement. It was fun and exciting to see the families receive the diplomas. It wasn't just the students, it was the families who got to receive the diploma. And their excitement was just really exciting. It's a huge milestone for so many of these families. But speaking of milestones, I wanted to take a moment to recognize another much, much less joyous milestone. It's been a part of the discussion I've been having with some of my students lately. I'm sure many of you are aware that a year ago today, George Floyd was murdered. A tragedy that's helped us as a nation focus our whole lens on racism and social injustice in the country and the world. And I want to, I'd like to just take a moment to reflect on that and reflect on some of the others who've suffered and paid the price of some of the ultimate price of this injustice. So I just want to take a moment to reflect on that. Also, I want to take a moment to read an excerpt from a statement of an organization condemning what, as they put it, "the shameful acts of systemic racism and injustice." "We as an organization unequivocally condemn police brutality, systemic racism. We stand with those who protest racism and the inequitable system of justice as social and economic inequalities of all kinds. We stand with those proposing reforms geared geared towards achieving diversity, equity, and inclusion, not only in colleges, but in all aspects of American life. We believe change must happen, and we will play an active role in making that change happen." Now, I know some of us might, to some of us, that may sound like a statement from some radical and fringe group. And you might be right. If you consider ACCT, the Association of Community College Trustees, as a radical fringe organization, an organization that we all as a board belong to. This comes from a statement of their commitment to diversity and equality and inclusion. I encourage all of us not to forget what we've learned over this past year, especially around these issues. And that's all I had to report.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. Dr. Thor.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I want to join with the others in congratulating the graduates of the class of 2021, and specifically to thank Rio Salado College for once again providing me the opportunity to participate in their virtual commencement ceremony. I also want to thank the faculty, staff, and administrators of this great district for the phenomenal job that they did this academic year under extremely difficult circumstances. And I wish them all a healthy and relaxing summer and look forward to being back together with them in person in the fall. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Nguyen.
Yay, class of 2021. I think we all agree that this last year was unprecedented. And I would echo the comments of my board members on the incredible work that the administration, that the faculty, that everyone, the students, had to reinvent themselves this last year. And we as board members also had to do the same. I would especially want to acknowledge the efforts of the Community College Foundation, who really had to address unprecedented needs of our students and did so so effectively in unprecedented times and delivered education. And we heard some of the wonderful examples tonight. I personally want to thank Rudy. It was a pleasure and privilege to work with you, and I continue to be amazed and so proud of the efforts of our foundation. They really have reinvented themselves and collaborated with the board and the community college in such a positive way. To all the speakers tonight, it is so wonderful that we can acknowledge different groups that are part of our community college. I get an opportunity to work with indigenous, Native Americans, the 22 tribes in our state. Unfortunately, they're more prone to being trafficked. And so there's 3,000 missing indigenous children in Arizona tonight. So I look forward to other opportunities that we as a board can embrace these different diverse groups and work with them to come up with collaborative solutions where we are working together, but not targeting another group to elevate one group over another. But we work with humanity and we honor humanity with kindness and with respect. And I look forward to the summer and to seeing people in person in the fall. And I am hopeful that when we can come back together, that our enrollment numbers will go up, that the four-year college programs that we'll be selective with what we do, but that those will be wonderful stepping stones for people to go on and get advanced degrees at our four-year universities, so that we will be, play even a bigger role in the bridge to education. And finally, on the workforce development, how exciting that we are positioned in our community to put people back to work and that we can be the catalyst and the resource with our workforce development partners to get Maricopa County back fully operational. And so I am proud to be part of this board and proud to be working with community leaders and business leaders across Maricopa County. And I look forward to having our interim chancellor be able to lead in person. And I thank you for the time and the opportunity to speak tonight, Mrs. Sullivan.
You're welcome. So it is my turn, and I know we've all been together for a few hours here this evening. Outstanding presentations by all, particularly our students. And we want to always remember to celebrate their efforts and their dedication to their futures. I also would like to acknowledge the administration and the faculty and staff for the great work that they do in concert to help our students realize their dreams. And with that, congratulations to all of those who have some promotion certificate, diploma, whatever you call that piece of paper and recognition that you received at the end of this year for the great commitment that you have made to your future and for all those in your family and your colleagues. So congratulations to all of you. There are so many people, again, as we approach the end of this fiscal year, to acknowledge. But I'll just try to sum it up and say you've all done a great job this year. We have one more month to go. There's still a lot of ground to cover. We will look forward to being together for more meetings. And as we anticipate what's ahead, whether it's discussing policy, staffing, curriculum, et cetera, we will do so with a constant commitment to what is best for all. Summing that up, just, I've had a series of meetings with the Association of Governing Boards, the Arizona Association of Community College Boards, and have had meetings with our congressional leaders ongoing. So anyway, great May meeting here, and thank you all for your time. I want to remind everyone that we will have some work sessions throughout the month of June. June 8th, we have several scheduled, we may have to look at that timing around those, June 15 also. And that will lead us then to our June 22, 2021 board meeting, which will conclude the academic year of meetings. So with that, thank you all for your time tonight. Congratulations to you, Rudy, also, and your leadership to the foundation, and best wishes to you. So good night, everyone, and thank you for your time.